Good evening. Welcome to the Dumfries Town Council Meeting of Tuesday, December the 3rd, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Councilmember Peterson, here. Councilmember Pete?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Chair Proton Miles?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Here.
Mayor Wood?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, Minister Darryl Vaughn of Grace Church, please open us up with our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We bless you, God. Father, as these elected officials gather to this town hall meeting today, I humbly ask for your guidance and your wisdom in the decisions. May they listen with open hearts, speak with respect, and seek unity and solutions that benefits our community as a whole. Grant them the wisdom, Father, and the courage to address challenges with integrity and compassion, and may their decisions reflect your love and justice for all. Remember them, Lord. Remind them, Lord, that it is the duty not only to serve those of power and means, but to also seek the best interests of the less fortunate. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to come together to and work towards a better future for this town. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Case been moved and second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chair Proton Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right, next on the agenda is awards and proclamation. And the first one, or the only one, is a presentation of a resolution recognizing Councilman Tyrone A. Brown's service. Where his Councilman Brown has honorably served the town of Dumfries as a member of the town council since his election in 2020, whereas during his tenure, he has been a steadfast advocate and a passionate voice for advancing common sense, safety solutions, helping foster community culture, responsibility, and mutual respect. Councilman Brown played a pivotal role in navigating us through the unprecedented challenges of COVID-19 pandemic, providing his steady leadership to protect public health and support economic recovery, whereas his contributions were instrumental in advancing major economic projects, including the development of the Rose Gaming Resort, a $460 million investment that has significantly boosted this local economy, creating hundreds of jobs and enhanced town revenues. Whereas Councilman Brown has actively contributed to shaping the new vision and strategic plan for the town of Dumfries, ensuring the trajectory is guided by inclusive growth, economic vitality, community well-being, whereas his dedication, leadership, and collaborative spirit have left an enduring legacy, positioning Dumfries as a forward-thinking and thriving community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the town council of Dumfries hereby expresses its deepest gratitude to Councilman Tyrone A. Brown for his exceptional service, his unwavering commitment, and his numerous contributions to the town. Be it further resolved that the resolution be presented to Councilman Brown as a token appreciation. A copy be entered into the official minutes of the town council meeting held on December 3rd, 2024. By order of the town council, sound signed, Mayor Derek R. Wood. You want to give something? You want to say anything right now?
No.
It's coming. It's right. Okay. All right. And next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 19th, 2024 town council meeting.
May I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second. All right, any discussion? It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chair Proton Miles?
Upstate.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
Okay. All right, we will have council comments. All right.
Citizen comments.
Citizens comments, sorry. I say I see. Man, citizen comments. Madam Clerk, is there any citizens? Okay.
Yes, two citizens sign up to speak. The first person is Russell Young.
Good evening, town council. Mr. Mayor, Madam Attorney, Madam Town Manager. Russell Young, 1-8317, Summit Point Drive. Just really truly want to get up and say thank you to Tyrone Brown for your wisdom, for your compassion, for this town and this community. Thank you, and I really and truly appreciate for all the hard work in which you've done for myself, for my family, and again, for this community. I just want to say thank you. Appreciate you.
Madam Clerk?
The next person is Nevillee Torey.
Good evening, council. Nevillee Torey, 1-8138 Tibbs Lane, Dumfries, Virginia. I just want to come before you at this last month of the year and just say to the council and its members that 2024 for me has been wonderful through the town, especially with the app. It has helped me remember activities that have been going on. So I think that was a good addition, and I just encourage you to continue to be innovative for us who is always trying to know what's going on in the town. And secondly, to Councilman Brown, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate you. It was wonderful being around you and all the support that you have given to the community and to the council. So I too appreciate you. Thank you so much for your service.
Madam Clerk, was there?
That concludes it.
Okay. All right, now, council comments. All right, Councilman Pete, you had any comments today?
Just want to say happy holidays to all. Everyone be safe as we're entering our holiday months. Check on your neighbors and seniors as it is getting very cold outside. You know, support and supporting volunteers to some of the local giveaways as far as clothing and coats may go. Be mindful of our children. They will be out of school in what, two weeks, three weeks, something like that? They will be out playing around. So also, I want to give kudos on the Christmas tree lighting that we just finished having. It was an excellent experience. It was cold out there, but we made it through. That's all I have right now, man. Thank you.
Councilwoman Peterson?
I just want to say thank you for your service, Tyrone, and sitting next to me for the last two years. Ayew. That's all I had.
Councilman Fields?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the holiday season again. Hope everyone is safe out and about through the holiday season. We definitely look forward to our upcoming events, far as the Christmas parade, the Christmas in Dumfries shop with the cop. And we just had a wonderful event over the other past weekend. So we look forward to seeing everyone. My colleague, Councilman Brown, it's been a pleasure working with you on the council. Definitely appreciate our good talks and our good wisdom and our good, you know, just working together and getting things done. Appreciate it, man.
Chair Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a prosperous new year. I do also want to say a couple words about my colleague, Tyrone. Councilman Brown, I am truly going to miss working with you. You were very firm in all your convictions, but also flexible enough to hear me out whenever I called you. "Tyrone, I don't like this. I don't know about this. How you feel about this?" You never hung up on me. I appreciate that. And so I don't want to say goodbye because that would be, I want to see you again, but just until we meet again, until you get back in, until your next event. So just wish you all the luck going forward. Wish you very well. Ayew.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Tonight is we mark Councilman Brown's final meeting with us here in the dais. I want to acknowledge you for your as a service to our community, and thank you for your dedication to the community and to say that I appreciate your ability as we have had our long meetings and our intense conversation, your ability to bring about thought-provoking questions that pushed us further into deeper conversations and forced us to sometimes think a little bit harder, a little bit deeper, and foster greater conversation. It's appreciated. Your volunteer work with the Boys and Girls Club is commendable, and it's a reflection of your dedication to supporting youth. And with that, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and thank you again for your commitment and time in this role. Also, as we approach the holiday season, I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to our incredible community. This is a time of reflection and connection and giving, and I'm inspired by how much we have come together to support each other in this community. So I want to make sure that carry the spirit of kindness and collaboration into next year. I wish you all and your loved ones a season of peace and joy and gratitude. So happy holidays. Thank you all for making our community special. Ayew.
Want to say good evening, everyone. You know, we had a festival of lights, and as you come into the town hall, you see how it just illuminates our beloved town, and it's just a great, a great interest way. And when I come up here, I'm filled with joy and gratitude for just a reminder of what this time of the year brings, the joy, the happiness, the laughter. And this year has been meaningful for us as, you know, the town we've been celebrating, one, 275 years, and this holiday season really just offers us an opportunity to showcase, I think, the spirit and the unity that makes Dumfries such a wonderful place to live and to do business. Just last week, as my colleagues have said, we came together at Garrison Park for our annual Christmas tree lighting. That event was packed with an array of activities, and you saw the young children inspired in spite of the cold weather, and there was such a great turnout. A heartfelt thank you goes out to all the hard-working staff who set up in that cold weather and had to break down after we were gone and we were warm and all thawed out. So kudos to you. And look at me close on the camera. I want to speak to that person who walked away with our DVD, The Grinch Who Stole Christmas. We're going to ask you kindly, just don't be a Grinch. Bring the DVD back. You might have picked it up by accident, so we're going to say no harm, no foul, because the event, I think the Grinch eventually brought all the toys back. Is that how the story ended? So just bring the DVD back, man. Thank you. This year, I decided I wanted to do something special because I like to always drive around, and every year I generally take pictures of the houses in the different communities. Prince William Estates, you always have great houses, and some over there in Old Town Dumfries. And I wanted to do something, and so out of my pocket, I said I'm going to get some awards. I want to do a Christmas tree lighting, I mean, not a Christmas tree, but a holiday house lighting contest to highlight the festivities and everybody, all the residents who showcase their creativity. And so I just did a post on my Facebook page, and you can get all the details. And I can't wait for you to send me pictures and the displays of lighting, and then I'll pick a winner based on the number of votes from the pictures, and I'll do it at the end of the Christmas parade. And speaking of the parade, I think that's going to be a fantastic celebration, so I need you to mark your calendars. Bring your friends, bring your families, bring your neighbors, and let's fill the streets with some laughter, with some joy, with holiday cheer. Because every year, we know this parade is more than just a parade. It's an event. It's a reflection of the strong bonds and the things that unite us as a community, and it remind us of the festive spirit that makes Dumfries so special. I'm proud to share that, once again, a lot of our local businesses are stepping up with their generosity, generosity this holiday season. Most of them donating toys to brighten up the holidays for our children in our town. Meanwhile, our incredible police department is collecting funds, and they're teaming up with our town council for their annual Christmas in Dumfries. That's going to be held on December the 21st. This is a cherished tradition, which includes shopping with the police. It's an initiative where the officers and the council members will take local youth shopping for holiday gifts and let them pick out whatever they want to a certain dollar bill. Not whatever they want, but it's yet another example of the kindness and care that really define Dumfries in our community. And as we close out this year, I want to continue to reflect on how far we come together. No, no longer is Dumfries, no longer is Dumfries just a place that people pass through. It's a destination where people come to live, where people come to visit, and we're creating those lasting memories. From transformative projects to community-focused initiatives, we're shaping a town that is growing in size, in heart, and spirit. So this holiday season, let us celebrate not only the festive season, but also the incredible people and the moments that make Dumfries extraordinary. Let's spread joy. Let's give generosity, and let's look ahead with hope and determination. To my colleague, Councilman Tyrone Brown, who has not only served on council, but prior to that, he served on our planning commission from, I think, 2013, 2014, when we tapped him. So he's been serving a lot longer up here, this town, from the many tedious and thought-provoking conversations. We appreciate you. You are my friend. I will continue to talk to you and tug on you. I thank you for being a part of this council and this amazing community. And to the community and everybody watching, may this season continue to bring you peace, love, and countless reasons to smile. Thank you all for being part of this amazing community and joining us. Thank you all for being part of this amazing community and joining us as we continue to build a brighter future for Dumfries. This is officially our last scheduled meeting of the year, uh, so we're going to be on holiday break from the dais, but not from doing the work that you all elected us to do. So stay connected to each and every one of us on our social media. And with that, uh, Councilman Brown, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not going to be long, but I do want to, uh, uh, express gratitude for this council, this town, the town manager, uh, and, and the staff that supports us and as, as a whole. Uh, there's been some things that we have accomplished in the time that I've been here on the council. Significant things that haven't happened in forty, fifty years in this town, so I am very proud of that. What I would like to do is acknowledge each individual council person here. Uh, everyone brings something of flavor to this, to this dais, and, uh, you hear, uh, flavor, uh, uh, conversations that will, will heighten at some times, so that's, that's argument, police people, that's what that is, an argument. So we do have conflicts, we do, uh, work through these conflicts, and any provoking question that I may have was in the best interest from my perspective for the town. So I voice my opinion. But here's some things about this council that I want you all as citizens to know. Mr. Sean Pete. Sean is very passionate about the youth and recreation in this town. Things that you won't see, see from this dais that I've seen personally where kids run up to Sean and greet him publicly, Sean has reached down in his pocket and give them money just to buy treats. You don't see that from this council. You don't see that from what he says here. But I see this, I've seen this, and those aspects of Sean Pete sticks with me. I just wanted you to know that he's just not a councilman, he's active in the community. My brother, Brian Fields. Uh, if you say anything about being a police officer back in the day, again, I'm going to stick a pencil in my ear, and then I'm going to stick a pencil in my eye, because I want to see somebody come tell me about you being a police officer back in the day. But I get it, bro. You have that in your blood. That's not going to go anywhere. I understand, I get it. It's like men in the military, once you're in the military, you're there. So I, I can appreciate that, that which is a joke. But what impressed me about you, sir, is your concern that this town and this council is not disrespected in any way or form or fashion. When Vice President came down to, uh, support McAuliffe? Uh, Prince William County Dems hosted that here, but they didn't have room for this council. You made a way to the front. You made that happen. Just at the Rose last, the opening ceremony, there was two seats on, on the ceremony stage. Brian looked at me and say, "We're going to get up on that stage." They put more chairs on that stage, and it was crap. But Brian said, "We should be there. We should be representing the town. This is a part of, of what we did here." So I can appreciate your, your steadfastness when it comes to that. My sister, Sylonia. So I think you're, you're, in my perspective, you're probably the most astute political person on this dais. You know what to say, when to say it, and how to say it. And I'm going to miss those calls. As you mentioned, I'm just checking to see how you feel, what's your temperature on this. So I, I will miss that. I appreciate you. You are really the reason why I'm here. You, you put this in the air when I was in the planning commission, you said, "Hey, once you run for council," and I started laughing, and I'm on the council. So I appreciate you. Vice Mayor. All I can say is tenacity, vigor, and you have established your position as a leader on this council. Your influence to this, this council, uh, your influence on this council has moved this town in a specific direction. Uh, that's not something that's, uh, to be taken lightly. If you're a leader, you should be influencing, influencing the community, influencing your peers in order to get things done. So I really appreciate that about you. My sister, Katrina. So I know that, that, um, sometimes it is a little difficult because you're the new member on council, but I can tell you, it took me two years to understand how this dais works. And it's really not about the procedure piece, it's about what you bring to this council from your life experience. If everybody played that pivotal role here on the council and brought that experience, the collaboration there would have better outcomes. And that's what you bring to this table. You, uh, we had a conversation about the internship. You need to continue that conversation with the town manager. You are on point with that, just continue pushing that. So I appreciate you, I appreciate your friendship, I appreciate your laughter. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And to my brother, the mayor of Dumfries. Let me just say this, y- you're, you're fifty percent of the reason why I didn't run. Uh, I, I've been able to, uh, attend some places or some conferences, some meetings that I would have never thought that I should be at, and you drug me out, and you showed me some ropes, and you showed me how to build relationships, and you were pointing out people that, that could help this community. You didn't have to do that. So when I said you're fifty percent of the reason why I'm not running is because I've seen your calendar. I can't do that for the town. You, you're so busy with trying to make sure that the town is, um, up front, in front of people, and it's, 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 uh, i- it is something that you have to have a level of commitment to do. And I don't have that commitment, and I thought that it would be an injustice for me to run for a council again and not have that commitment like you have. So that's the fifty percent. And though I, I do love this council, we do have some very difference of opinions, and that's what this council is about, that's why we have seven here. One fundamental, uh, difference that I have with the council as a whole is the way we govern, and it's not that they're wrong, it's just my perspective, and that was the other fifty percent that, that I shouldn't be here. I think we have in good hands with Mr., uh, Councilman Russell. Uh, I think you're in good hands. I think this council will continue to push this, uh, um, town forward. I, I, I optimistically believe that, uh, so I think we're in good hands, the town is in good hands. Uh, for things that I am very proud of, I am proud of the roads coming to town of Dumfries. Uh, if you know the significance of the revenue that's generated there that will impact us as citizens of the town of Dumfries, uh, if you understand that there was a landfill that had to be maintained if the roads weren't there by the town of Dumfries, and that was a cost associated with that, if you understand those things, then you will look at this whole road project as, as a little differently. I'm also proud that we authorized the town manager to hire Ms. Robinson. Top-notch attorney. Uh, if you understand that, uh, area, is that we had a contract, we had retainers for a, a lawyer for the town, costing crazy, and with the hiring of Ms. Robinson, that kind of replaced that, so that's a instant saving over a couple of years that we, we've, we've, uh, added to the budget here. Things that I, I'm disappointed, and this is me, I'm disappointed that I didn't commit enough time for this, to this town. That's me. It's not that I couldn't, it, there was conflicts in my livelihood, and I couldn't commit or I didn't commit, so that's bad on me, and this town deserved much, much better than that. Uh, I'm going to be off the dais and out of the, the politics for a couple of years, and hopefully I don't have to come back. Hopefully I can look around the town and everything is going well, but if there's a need for me to come back and run again, I, I will do that. And with that, I yield back, Mayor.
Your Councilman Brown. Don't cry. Next on our agenda is the, uh, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move, will you approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Okay. It's been, uh, moved and second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call for the, uh, question.
Councilmember Peterson? Aye. Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Mouse?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right, next on our agenda is a public hearing, uh, on the request to approve amendments to Chapter 70 zoning Article 1 and 3 of the code of the town of Dumfries to add the definition and allowable use of cultural arts and entertainment. Uh, Mr. Tabor, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Pro Tem, and members of council. The town of Dumfries received an application for an amendment to the town code to add the definition of cultural arts and entertainment, "An establishment that produces or provides indoor and outdoor space for public or private events, performances, or exhibits for the purpose of leisure and entertainment." The town code gives the town council the authority to adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance by ordinance whenever the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice require. The town code currently allows the cultural arts and entertainment use in the Flex Business Office or FB01 zoning district. However, the code does not include a definition for the use. The applicant owns, uh, property in the B2 zoning district, and staff recommended an amendment to allow the use in the B2 and B1 zoning district with conditions. The town council referred the item to the planning commission to review the proposed amendments and provided a rec- and provide a recommendation. During the November 18th, 2024 meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment to Chapter 70, Article 1, adding the definition "Cultural Arts Entertainment and Event," and "Events," as "An establishment that produces or provides space for banquets, events, performances, exhibits, or receptions for the purpose of leisure and entertainment." The sale of tickets for admission to an activity or event on the premises during or immediately prior to the event is not permitted. The definition is attached to the draft ordinance as Exhibit 8. The planning commission also voted to refer the proposed amendment to Chapter 70, Article 3, which was attached as, uh, Exhibit B, uh, back to staff for revisions in substantive conformance with the planning commission's comments and to resubmit for reconsideration during the next planning commission meeting. Town staff recommends approval of the planning commission recommendations and adoption of the associated ordinance. Uh, thank you, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
You're asking for us to check, to add the definition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Council, any, any questions on what's before us? If not, uh, we'll open up the public hearing. Okay. Madam Clerk, uh, is there anyone here to speak? I know the applicant is here.
Yes, we have four people that signed up to speak. The first person is Maria Aguilera.
All right. Just want to remind you all that this is a public hearing to add the definition to the zoning, just to add the definition. Just wanted to make sure you knew that, and you have, uh, three minutes to speak.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, um, to the council to give me this opportunity. My name is Maria Aguilera. I am, um, I live in Prince William County, but I'm doing business here in Dumfries. I'm here with my sister, my husband, and my brother-in-law, um, and I'm going to speak for all of us. We are doing a, a family business, and we apply to, um, get our occupancy permit to have a banquet hall, um, at 7650 Possum Point Drive, um, which was not denied nor approved because the definition, um, was not included. And I'm here just to, um, represent the business that we want to bring to Dumfries. Um, we believe it's a good opportunity for the community to have a place to celebrate, um, their birthdays, um, weddings, and, and if, any, any celebration. Um, and also for community if they want to come and do another event also. Uh, my sister has a experience of, um, decor- in, in decoration, like, um, she has a boutique and a staff for, and she does a lot of events, so we have, and I, I have experience in business, so it's like a combination of everything, and we just wanted to present our project. And, and I, we hope that after here, we, we can have the occupancy permit approved so we can start business, because we have a lot of people already inquire about, um, the venue, about the banquet hall that we're planning to bring to Dumfries. That's all what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next person is Rolando Guzman.
Oh, they're all party?
They're all party, okay. Okay.
All right. And the applicant, did the applicant want to say anything to this? We always like to give the applicant an opportunity. No pressure.
Hello. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Dumfries residents. So as of right now, there is no definition to, uh, what we're proposing, um, within the zoning rules, so, uh, Cultural Arts and Entertainment Center, by not having a definition, makes it, as she just stated, impossible to pursue it. Um, and historically, being in the town for the last thirty years, we have had events, but it has been extremely difficult in the sense that we have to get special approvals, um, day of events. Um, over the last thirty years, we've had, uh, several events, and now we've realized the opportunity for this, uh, essentially going through this process, um, and creating more of an event space. And so I just really ask that the town council try to, uh, do whatever they can in the sense that, uh, the, the definition not being, uh, present at all, um, really hurts the businesses in Dumfries who are looking to expand, uh, and to, to be able to offer these. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else here to speak on this issue, uh, before I close it? You the property owner?
Hi, my name is Jürgen Van Dijk, I'm the property owner on, uh, 17650 Property, uh, Possum Point Road, which is in FB01, and we've had, um, event space for quite a long time, as you guys all know. Uh, we had two occupants before this one, and, um, this whole thing that's been happening with the definition has been held up. Our applicant for the new, uh, event space, which seems kind of unfair because FB01 is already for event space, um, so they've been waiting now for, I think, six weeks, right? Um, and it should have been, already been approved, uh, because the, the definition has nothing to do with FB01. So, and it would have been nice when they make changes, that they let the property owners that are affected by these things, uh, have some input. We appreciate that. Thanks.
All right. All right, seeing no more discussion. Public hearing is now closed. All right. Uh, Council, any, uh, questions or, uh, remarks? Vice Mayor?
Um, Mr. Tabor, I have a question, please. So what I'm confused about is hearing from the business owners on Possum Point, they're in a separate zone than the applicant across the street. they're in a separate zone than the applicant across the street. So, what I'm confused about is knowing that the business owners on Potsam Point, particularly the last business owner that spoke, has previously held and currently has event space over there. So, how is it that they've had event space over there without a definition, but it appears that because the current applicant is looking for event space across the street, now there's question of a definition? A new applicant on Potsam Point in a separate zone, their application is being held up due to a lack of definition? I'm confused about how what's happening in this zone across the street is impacting a new business on Potsam Point, which is in the same place where the same kind of business had already been being conducted. I'm confused about how and why that's happening.
Okay.
Stand up, please.
I will do my best. So, currently, the code allows the cultural arts and entertainment use in the FB01 district, or Flex Business Office district. And the use is permitted, but in the code, there is no definition for that use. And for other allowable uses throughout the code, there are definitions. So, to help us be able to regulate that use throughout the town where it is permitted, we need the definition. And therefore, we are requesting that the council approve adding the definition to the code. Again, currently, it is permitted in the FB01 district. So, once the definition is approved, then that helps the town regulate the uses, I'm sorry, regulate the use within that district, the FB01 district. The applicant owns property in a B2 district, and currently, the use is not permitted in the B1 and B2 districts. The planning commission considered an amendment to allow the use in the B1 and B2 district, but they have some additional concerns, and they wanted to have a little more time to consider the amendment and would like to consider, or plan to consider it at their next meeting and bring back a recommendation to council for the use in the B1 and B2 district. I hope that clarifies, and I'm happy to try to provide any other clarification.
So, I believe I understood everything that you said, but what I'm still confused about is I hear the delineation between the two zones. What I heard you say is that event space is currently allowed in FB01.
Cultural arts and entertainment use, yes.
Cultural arts and entertainment use. What I just heard the new business owner describe sounds like similarly business, similar to what the last gentleman spoke about. So, then why is their application being held up in this process? That's what I don't understand.
Well, because the definition is not included?
But, that's what I, so, but if the last gentleman has the same kind of business in FB01, even without, because the definition is something we're just now talking about. So, if that business was already there, operating the way they were operating, why can't the new business operate that way? That's the part that I'm confused about. Like, why? It seems to me that because now we're looking at what they want to do in B1 and B2, we're stopping what they were already doing in FB01? And that seems to me like we're crossing hairs, or it's like if they were already doing it in FB01, then do we have grandfather clause? Like, why is this changing what's happening in FB01? What ordinances were they able to operate in in FB01 that allowed them to do what they were doing in FB01? That they, now that we realize, oh, wait, we don't have this properly defined, why is that stopping them from doing what they were already doing in FB01? That's what I'm not understanding because it just sounds like we just stumbled upon something we should be doing differently. And so, now, well, like, everybody freeze until we figure this out. Is that what happening? Like, were they operating against the law? Unbeknownst to them, of course, but is that what was happening?
The short answer is yes. And the longer answer is the town staff, the zoning administrator in particular, is responsible for administering the zoning code. And we have, it's incumbent upon each zoning administrator to interpret and administer the code as they see fit. So, previously, zoning administrators and town staff accepted that use as conforming with the code without a definition, without it being defined, you know, and a cultural arts and entertainment venue being used or interpreted as an event space or an event use without a definition. And this is to provide that clarification and facilitate the administration of the code and make the decision allowable for the zoning administrator.
So, then my question is, because we recently had another business, a dance studio that just opened a couple months ago, and they have performances, right? So, do they fall under this same, this new ordinance? Would that be considered this cultural event?
No. I think last year, when I served the zoning administrator, we amended the code and allowed that use, added that use to the code. So, that permits that use.
So, they are conditional use?
They're in compliance.
They're in compliance?
Yes.
Okay. So, then there will be no grandfathered, there will be no one grandfathered in? Because in the past, have we, and I don't know, this may be before your time, but in the past, if I'm not mistaken, we have allowed situations for folks to be grandfathered in. And the reason I'm asking about grandfather clauses is because the last gentleman that spoke, his business has been here longer than your tenure here in the town. And he has operated in that space doing the same type of what we are now defining. And so, it would sound to me that he would be the perfect situation, then, for a grandfather clause.
So, I guess, to me, that may be a legal issue, but from my understanding, grandfathering allows for a use that was previously permitted, but then is not permitted any longer. And therefore, since they were operating when it was permitted, they're continued, they're allowed to continue that use even though it's not permitted and allowed when the code is changed. We do have some examples of uses that are no longer permitted, but there are businesses that existed prior to the code was changed to not allow them. And they are allowed to continue operating, and they are therefore grandfathered. But in this case, the code did not specifically allow for that use, but those uses were existing. And this just makes it clear it allows them. And going forward, they operate in compliance with the code.
Okay. And so, if we were to approve this language as far as the applicant that is here tonight, if we do approve this language, do we then have the opportunity to come back? Because when we're talking about this FB01 zone versus this B1, B2 zone, the B1, B2 zone is residential right there. There's a lot of residential there, whereas this FB01 zone, they're not really close to residential. So, we're talking two different areas. So, if we approve this language, does that give carte blanche authority, then, for them to move forward with having an event space? Or is that a separate conversation?
In the FB01, yes.
Yes.
In the B1, B2, the planning commission is still, is going to come back with the recommendation for B1, B2.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I just want to say the frustration, it's not with you. It's with the process, right? We have no consistency with zoning administrators. And so, every time we get a new zoning administrator, whatever they interpret, right? Because the interpretation is up to the zoning administrator. So, now, we have a zoning administrator who say, oh, well, there's no definition, so now you got to wait. But the applicant's been holding on for six weeks. She didn't even know to come ask for a definition till somebody else brought in and asked for a definition. And then the property owner didn't even know. And so, it's frustrating because, you know, we just had a huge, great, successful business expo. And we told everybody, hey, Dumfries is open for business. The process is simple, it's easy. Come on and do business in Dumfries. But, yeah, the zoning interpretations, right? There's, because they don't, there's no conversation. And when people look at these zoning codes, the way it reads and interprets is two different things. I guess it's almost like the law, the spirit of the law, and then what it is. And so, how do you interpret that? And so, now, we got a use that, as the vice mayor point, has been used for years. There was a roller skating rink and all kinds of stuff over there for years. And now, instead of us approving this, now she's coming saying, hey, I've been waiting. I mean, she just missed Thanksgiving and now this Christmas season to be able to do a whole lot of things. And I know it's not, and I'm just voicing the frustrating, you know, coming from an entrepreneur and a business standpoint, with how things are interpreted, interpretation of all of these different things. And it's stuff we've been dealing with for years. You know, if you go back on the record, we've probably been talking about this the last 15 years. And we've been through six or seven zoning administrators during that period of time. And so, you know, I know that this public hearing is just to add the definition, so there's a definition in the zoning, and we can move forward, and we can discuss the, whatever else the applicant wants at a later date. So, this is strictly, this public hearing is for the definition. So, I was just telling you where the frustration is with this. And no much, I know it's nothing. You're not the zoning, you're not the one that can interpret and make the determination that's at the sole discretion of that person. So, so, we're, okay, Councilman Brown?
So, just a quick question on the actual businesses that are occupying these zones. Is there a way or is there some process that the new administrator comes in and reviews what's in place? Because right now, we're identifying an issue that was already in play. And it's just because we didn't know that that was in play until the business owner walked in and said, hey. So, what is the process? Is there a process as a new zoning administrator, when you come into a new scenario that you review what's in play? Everything? I mean, I don't know how zoning administrators work. But if I'm in charge of something that I'm coming into a new scenario or new business or new area, I'm trying to find out what's happening there so I make sure that everything is locked down. It appears that we don't do that. We just wait till these things rise up.
So, there is a process to proactively look at the zoning ordinance and even to make comprehensive amendments to the zoning ordinance to try to bring it into compliance with state and local code as well as what is actually happening in the community. And that is something that we are looking at doing in the near future. Often, that is done after a comprehensive plan is updated. And so, we're updating our comprehensive plan. And usually, that happens after that process is concluded.
Okay. So, thank you. And again, the mayor has already said this probably happened way before you came on. But it makes sense that if we have businesses that are operating in this town, and we switch zoning administrators at that point, wherever these businesses reside, that should be the priority, starting there and go back up instead of coming down. So, we don't get in a scenario like this. And that's just a recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
One quick question. Once this definition is decided upon, if it is in favor of approval or if it is approved, can we then expedite, do what's necessary to expedite the approval process to allow this business to get opened? Because I feel like this business has been, you know, due to circumstances beyond their control because of what we are trying to work through. As a town, we're going through some growing pains. Is there any way that we can prioritize making sure that this business gets the priority, attention that it needs so that they can be opened?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. The public hearing has been closed. I think we've exhausted the conversation. The action requested is to approve the ordinance to amend the definition to Chapter 70 of the zoning. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. So, the motion is second. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chairperson Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion is passed.
Okay. And next on our agenda, oh, we have a closed session. The town of Dumfries desires to go into a closed session according to Code 2.2-3711 Alpha 1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and consider personnel matters, including, but not limited to, the appointee assignment and performance of specific public officers and appointees. And so, I want to make a motion that we go in closed session based on that.
Second.
It's been second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chairperson Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
We are now in closed session.
We'll meet then 8:05, because you have a question.
The Town Council has convened in closed session on December the third. And by the affirmation of this vote, we will certify that only discussion by which we went into closed session were heard, discussed or considered according to Virginia Code 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia. That's my motion.
A second.
Okay, it's been motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Chair Potter Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
We're now back in open session.
Okay, no action to be taken. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.